...three and the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Peppin.
Yeah.
Vincent?
Here.
Gibson?
Here.
Austin?
Here.
Micho?
Yeah.
Witham?
Here.
Gerting?
Here.
Cameron?
Here.
Messier?
Here.
Your Honor, without objection, we'd like to recognize you tonight to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Without objection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brings us to agenda item number three, which is our recognition of indigenous people, our native ancestral Americans. This meeting is taking place on Nadi Kana, which is the unceded traditional ancestral homeland of the Abenaki, Pennecook, and Wabanaki people, past and present. We acknowledge and honor with gratitude the land, waterways, living being, and the Abenaki, the people who have stewed at Nadi Kana throughout the generations. Without objection from counsel, we are going to shift a couple items of the agenda. We'll start by shifting the communications, therefore, the communications and presentations can take place before the public hearing, so the members of the public know the full information of exactly what items are moving forward onto the public hearing. So without objection, we will start with the presentation by Henry Herndon, Director of Member Service from Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. Good evening and welcome, and I probably butchered your last name, but you can butcher mine later and then we're even. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you very much. Yes, I am Henry Herndon. I'm the Director of Member Services with Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. Pleased to be here with the City Council for the second public hearing on Somersworth Community Power and the draft electric aggregation plan. Somersworth Community Power is a program that will offer residents and businesses in the city an opportunity to have lower electricity supply rates and more choices for their energy options, for clean energy options. So the purpose of this public hearing is to review the draft electric aggregation plan, which has gone through a good process with the Somersworth Community Power Aggregation Committee and is available for adoption for the City Council, which would further the process towards bringing the program online. I'm also pleased to report this year, the market for community power programs kicked off in the state. There are sixteen, at least sixteen, cities and towns that have programs up and running. There's a comparable town in size roughly, not precisely, but the city of Lebanon was one of the first cities to launch a program, and just in the first four months or so of operation, they've generated about a million dollars in electric bill savings for their residents and businesses. In addition to that, more value in the form of financial reserves and community reserves that are accruing for future benefits. So considerable savings happening across all of those sixteen communities. It's about $10 million in the first year of the program, so there's a lot of value, and it's a really exciting time where cities and towns across the state are making use of this good bipartisan legislation to create value for residents and businesses and really have more of a say in energy decisions and local planning and development for energy infrastructure potentially over the years to come. So with that sort of introduction, I'll go through the draft electric aggregation plan and look forward to questions from the public and/or the City Council. This title slide is showing the annual membership meeting of Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. This is the nonprofit that I work for, the nonprofit that was founded by New Hampshire Cities, Towns, and Counties for the purpose of bringing transparency and accountability into the service for these types of programs. So the coalition, this nonprofit, it's subject to the right-to-know law, it's governed by its member cities, towns, and counties. The membership at the annual meeting elect the board, which is staffed by folks from city councils and select boards. So it really is an organization designed to be accountable to its member cities and towns, of which Somersworth is one. So pleased to be here with Somersworth, and I will move through the details of the plan. So what is community power? As a result of the legislation signed by Governor Sununu in recent years, cities and towns can become the default electricity provider for their residents and businesses. Essentially, communities can pool purchasing power across their electric accounts to achieve an economy of scale. Under these programs, the utility company is always going to own the grid. Every source will always own the grid, deliver the power, build a customer, but the portion of the bill associated with the generation of power, energy supply, now we have local control where cities can have more of a say in how they buy that power. And for customers, the results can be lower rates and more choices for energy options should the customer choose an innovative rate or a clean energy option. So the relevant RSA is RSA 53E, relative to aggregation of electric customers by municipalities and counties. And just a couple key details. These programs are entirely voluntary. Any customer can choose to take power supply from their utility, EverSource, or from another third party at any point in time without any fee or penalty. So it's a voluntary program and is a program that is self-funded. It is funded through the revenue from electric bill payments by participating customers. There are no taxpayer funds associated with the program. I just talked about some of the goals and objectives that are outlined in the plan, but local control, really giving cities and towns more of a say in energy decisions, lowering costs, which we've discussed. Some communities are motivated to purchase more clean energy or to develop local energy resources, which can be an option over time, and other sort of market innovations that can come with these types of programs that we see in some of the more mature markets. There are a number of states across the country that have more mature community power markets, and we see them really leading on some of the more innovative energy storage or things of that nature. An important detail in the plan also is that this program would only launch for the city of Somersworth if the initial rate were lower than the energy supply rate offered by EverSource. So the programs don't launch unless they're delivering customer savings on day one. This is just an example and illustration of an electric bill, and for folks who maybe aren't as excited as I am to read all the different line items of their electric bill, there's really two main pieces. In the blue, you have the energy supply component. This is what we're talking about when we talk about community power. This is the only thing that would be affected. Delivery, this is EverSource's business model. This is what EverSource does well. They keep the poles and wires up and running, they deliver electricity, they're there for reliability. That all remains unchanged. So this is sort of like the first page of the bill, where you break out supply and delivery. On the second page of the bill, this portion here, this is the delivery portion that is EverSource that would remain unchanged regardless, but what we can now have more local control over is the supplier portion. So the only thing that would change from a customer's perspective is the supplier portion would read Somersworth Community Power. I should have an example from another program in the state here, and customers would have the Somersworth Community Power rate at a discount to the EverSource rate. So process-wise, the city's been making good progress with the previous resolution of this council to join Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire and form a committee. That committee has met and drafted an electric aggregation plan, which we're discussing tonight. This is the second of the two public hearings, and then the next step, these steps are largely laid out by the state law, the next step would be for the City Council to adopt that plan, which would then authorize the City Council to, in the future, enter into contracts to launch the program. There is a review by the state. The Public Utility Commission will review the plan, and they have six days to approve that plan, after which point in time the City Council could act to implement it. So a little more detail about the plan. I've mentioned these points, we've established a committee. The plan details how the program will operate. It ensures that the program will comply with the state law and requires this public process, which we are in the midst of. There are some other requirements that relate to, you know, meeting minimum environmental standards in state law, addressing the assurance that customers on electric assistance program, these are income-qualified electric customers who receive a discount on their electric bill, they can participate, their discounts will not be affected. So some details of this manner. And this is an outline of the plan. It includes much of what we've discussed here, but the number and the aggregate electric usage of accounts in the city, so we can begin to get a picture of the volume of electricity we're purchasing. After the plan is approved, we'll get much better data from the utilities on electricity volumes in the city to inform procurement. The plan discusses Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire and then sort of lays out step-by-step the different aspects that are required under state law. So those are listed here. Here we have that load data. So there's really two categories of electric customers. On the left two columns, we see utility default customers. It's about 80 percent. Well, in our case, this is about 5,000 customers compared to the 1,700 on competitive supply, but default customers have made no choice to purchase power from a different supplier. We all, as customers, can go on the New Hampshire Department of Energy website and look up different electric sellers and choose one if we'd like to. Most of us don't, at least at the residential level. Some of us do. Some of us have voluntarily gone and shopped for electricity on our own. They're represented on the right side here, and these customers would not be affected in any way by this program because they are already making a choice to shop with a different provider. This program is really only for the default customers that are with the EverSource default, and there's a decent volume, 35,000 megawatt hours or 35 million kilowatt hours annually in that group. So I'll talk a little bit about Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. Again, this is a community-governed power supplier, so created by New Hampshire Cities and Towns. This slide's a little bit dated. The membership has actually grown to about 50 currently, and if we look at the map, the communities shown in green, including the city of Dover, just to our south, have launched programs and are currently supplying electricity at a lower rate and generating those savings for their customers. The communities shown in blue are going to bring their programs online in the month of March, and Somersworth's in a very good position now to be looking at a mid-2024 launch, if you choose to move forward with the program, along with a number of other cities and towns from around the state. The current customer base of just those green communities, it's about 80,000, 85,000 electric customers, which is a larger load than some of the investor-owned utilities in the state, Unitil and Liberty. So there's considerable scale in buying power across those communities. And this is something that's really spreading very quickly across the state. Again, just the first communities starting programs this year after a couple years of startup and regulatory approval, and many more to come. This slide shows the Board of Directors of the coalition. So we have local elected officials, volunteers on local committees, municipal staff and city managers, who serve on the board to ensure accountability to the member towns and really do ensure decision-making is by for the member cities and towns. And there's a lot of really great expertise on the board. The board's a volunteer board, but we do have folks who have served in the state legislature and as regulators at the Public Utility Commission, folks who have been utility executives, folks who have founded energy companies, and a lot of really great expertise on a volunteer level that has come together from across the state to help put this organization together and then serve on our committees. Again, all the meetings being open to the public and subject to right-to-know. In terms of staff and service providers, it's sort of, the business model is this combination of community governance and oversight with expertise on the operations side. So we have Brian Callan is the Chief Executive Officer. This is someone who's had 20 years' experience in public power. He was the Vice President of Power Supply for New Hampshire Electric Cooperative, which is a nonprofit utility in the state, and we have a growing staff team and a number of professional service providers to advise on power procurement, to conduct customer service, legal accounting, et cetera. So for a customer, what does this look like? Let's say the plan is adopted, the state approves it, and then the City Council decides to implement. What would happen is 30 days before launch, every electric account in the city would receive a letter in the mail, looks something like this envelope here, and this letter here, and it would say, "Welcome to Somersworth Community Power. We're implementing this program. Here are all the details. Here's the electric rate we would be offering compared to EverSource, and here's the savings that could be expected. If you have any questions, if you'd like to opt out of the program, if you'd like to opt into the program, if you'd like to choose a 100% clean energy option, you can call this phone number, 1-866-603-Power, or you can visit our website or email us at info@communitypowernh.gov." So all those details are in the letter, and that will be available to every customer. The city is also required to hold one public information session within 15 days of that letter being issued. We would support that. We list that information in the letter, so those are pretty well-attended typically, since every customer in town is getting one. And there's the other key details. We've mentioned this does not affect folks who shop for competitive supply. We've mentioned that EverSource isn't affected in any negative way, and they're always going to deliver the power. This actually has no effect on EverSource's business or revenue, because their revenue is entirely associated with the electricity distribution and transmission grids. So all the details will be included there. This shows the current rates that are available to customers, and EverSource this week is announcing new rates that will be effective February through July of next year. So there are new rates forthcoming. But to take a look at what the current offering is, EverSource has a 12 and 1/2 cent or 12.58 cent rate, and community power rates start at 10.9 cents, so there's decent savings there for the customer. And then the customer also has a menu they can choose from if they would like to purchase 33% renewable energy, 50%, or 100%. So three of these four options currently actually being cost-competitive or more affordable than the EverSource option. And I think I've hit these key points, so I won't repeat myself, but I'm happy to answer any questions or take, yeah, questions from the council or from the folks.
Questions from counsel. Counselor Austin, and then Vincent. Counselor Austin.
Thank you. Thanks for coming this evening. My question is about the rate itself. Once that supply rate is set, is that set? Does it vary? Who looks at that to determine if it gets to be changed?
Yeah, that's a great question. Rates are set by the Board of Directors, and currently, utility rates are on a six-month cycle. So the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire adjusts rates as utilities adjust rates on that six-month schedule to ensure we can maintain a discount relative to the utility rate. And I want to, there's a nuance here that I'd like to unpack a little bit. It is not necessarily that we are purchasing power at the exact same time as the utilities, although in some cases, we buy some power then, but one of the advantages of community power is we can buy electricity freely in the marketplace. Utilities are restricted to purchasing twice a year on a regulated schedule. Coalition can month-to-month purchase different blocks of power and manage a portfolio of different blocks of power, different contracts for power. So we're buying power on a rolling basis, and then we're setting the rate as utility rates shift.
Thank you. Further questions from counsel? Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Your Honor, and thanks a lot for taking my question. So, and I don't want to make the question repetitive, I just want to be clear. So you've seen the last couple of months that utility rates, especially through EverSource, have gone down, and see how it works. I know how it works, because, see, the state of New Hampshire bids through ISO in New England every six months. That's probably why you're saying that the rates could change every six months. And we purchase that power and get a guaranteed rate. However, if the rates do go down, I know Counselor Austin just asked a question, but I just want to be clear. If the rates drop at a significant rate, meaning a lot, are you going to bring those rates down, or are we going to be stuck at the rate? I know you just answered it, but I just want to be clear.
Yeah, no, it's definitely a good question. So you're right, the rates are coming down, and we saw EverSource about 20 cents in the last six-month cycle. Now they're down to 12 and 1/2 cents, and some of the other utilities, Unitil and Liberty, they're coming in at about 10 cents now for the next period. So we'll see what EverSource comes. So that's great, downward pressure, good for all the customers. We will set rates late December, early January, and absolutely, the intention of setting rates, we're a member-driven organization, is to save money for customers moving forward. That is the motivation of the organization.
Thank you.
Further questions from counsel? Any further questions from counsel? Counselor Witham?
Thank you, Henry. Let's say, I don't know, five years down the road, new city council, different political environment, different energy environment, and at that time, they don't want to continue to be a member of the Community Power Coalition. Is there an opt-out?
So I'll talk about this in a couple, from a couple perspectives. For a customer, any customer, any point in time, they can leave the program, and that will be effective the next time the utility reads their meter on a monthly cycle. For the city, to leave the program, right now, there's no commitment for the city. Adopting this plan doesn't commit you, but to launch the program, there is a cost-sharing agreement, and there is a member services contract that the City Council could adopt to take service from the coalition. Within those contracts, there's termination language, and that lays out pathways for winding down the program essentially. So that's all detailed in those agreements, and there are off-ramps, yes.
Follow-up, if I may?
Without objection.
And I guess more of a statement, if you could just validate it, I suppose. I think it makes sense for the Community Power Coalition to remain competitive. Otherwise, if they're not, particularly to a greater degree than maybe a few cents, people will then opt out, because you can opt out at any time, and that's not in their best interest for that to happen, to have people fleeing their program. So I think the fact that you need to remain competitive even with downward pressure on electricity is a positive thing.
Yeah, well said.
Any further questions from counsel? Counselor Gerting?
I just want to reiterate something and then ask a question of you, with first being that even if rates drop across the board, it's true that if we do, like, decide to go forward with this program, the city will not join unless the rate that you set is lower than the rate provided by EverSource, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. And then the other piece I wanted to talk about was, when I've been chairing the Somersworth Community Power Coalition, so I've been learning a lot about this over the past, you know, month-plus. You had talked about in one of our meetings that there is a fund of money that is essentially set aside and almost used as like, I can't remember the term that you used when we were talking about it, but essentially used as a pot of money to be able to offset costs if, for some chance, that rates are higher than anticipated. Could you speak to that and how that fund is utilized and what the benefits of that might be to rates and the communities that participate in this?
Yeah, that's a really good question, and I'll, I will speak to that, and I would like to maybe unpack it a bit. So as I mentioned, there are service agreements to launch the program. There is another decision that would come before this council, before you'd launch, sometime in the new year perhaps, and part of what is detailed and laid out in that agreement is really, relates to three things. We have certain policies that govern the organization, and that we think of them as the three Rs: risks, risk, rates, reserves. So we have a risk-management policy that sets guardrails on how we purchase power in the energy market. We have a rate-setting policy that makes very clear how we set rates and how rates are set by our Board of Directors, and we have a financial reserves policy. So because we are a nonprofit organization, our, you know, transparency is a key part of what we do, and what we're talking about here is procuring large volumes of electricity. This year, the organization adopted a budget of about $50 million in revenue for the year. The vast majority of that money is paying for our cost of electricity. There's a sliver in there for our operating costs, or a piece of it for operating costs, and then there is a portion that is deposited into financial reserves or community reserves. So if we were a private company, this would be our profit margin, but as a nonprofit, it is monies that are deposited into a reserve account for the future benefit of members. We have certain targets. We have a 120 days of operating cash, including power supply costs target, that we want to achieve over a five-year period, to be a stable financial entity over the long term, to build up our balance sheet, to have good assets, lower our credit and financing costs. So this is all, is laid out in our policies that are available on the website, but monies are deposited in the reserve to ensure rate stability and long-term benefit for the members. So over time, we can keep the rate low, we can weather changes in the market, and we can, you know, finance projects should members choose to do that. A few more things I'll say about the reserve. These aren't monies that the city of Somersworth could just withdraw necessarily, but we do track the reserve, so we know the proportion of those joint reserves associated with each city or town's load. Should the city withdraw at some point in the future, which was discussed, that portion of the reserve would be remitted to the city. So it's sort of like a form of equity ownership in the organization. And what I could include as follow-up, I'm sorry there wasn't a slide here, is our reporting, where we track every single town, how much savings have been generated, how much of that reserve are associated with each town. So I hope that helps with that discussion.
It does, thank you very much.
Any further questions from counsel? Any further questions from counsel? None being so, thank you.
Thank you.
Our second presentation this evening is from Kenneth Sharpetti and Douglas Anderson of Hooksett, New Hampshire, on the proposed National Guard residential development. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. So again, I'm Ken Sharpetti, and this is my buddy Doug and my business partner. Basically, I was going to read part of the letter that I submitted to the city. "Our goal is to maintain as much green space as possible on the property while creating a quality residential development that is cohesive with the surrounding homes. The aesthetically pleasing craftsman-style condominium homes will not exceed two-bedroom or two-stories in height. We would design the campus with no more than 24 residential condominium units. Our intent is to incorporate or enhance the residential development with the existing armory building. An accurate survey of the property would be completed, and the baseball field would be subdivided to give back to the city. We want to be good neighbors by working with the council, the planning department, and the neighbors in our process of creating this neighborhood and enhancing the community further. Instead of focusing on maxing out the property, we're more concerned about a well-thought-out design suited for the neighborhood. It's more important to us that the design is right for the property and the right balance is achieved between design and economics. We do intend to use local tradespeople and material suppliers whenever possible." And there are some challenges, obviously, on the site. Well, I wanted to point out that, as you can see, like, the ball field going back, it's a significant part of the property, so obviously, that would stay residential, and we feel it's a good balance because, you know, you're going to have a residential use that'll have a lot of green space. We would be, our intent is to take down the metal building, also the lower, the lower part of the armory, that would be removed, and we did, you know, there are some challenges. There is asbestos in the armory building, and in both buildings, actually, and obviously, and we would assume that the cost to abate that. And I, and I think, yeah, we actually did try to meet with some of the neighbors to try to get their thoughts on it and give them a heads-up of what we're planning.
Thank you. Questions from counsel? Any questions from counsel? Counselor Austin?
Thank you. Do you have any idea of the range of what it might cost to live in these places once they're built?
Oh, I meant to point out, they are going to be different price points. There'll be, there'll be different-sized units based on, as you, as you look at this diagram, the, they, all of the, all of the, all of the units will have, we're planning on having garages. So it's going to be, it's difficult to actually put a price on any of the units now until we do survey, engineering. Really, we have, we did visit the site with one environmental company, but we really don't know the full extent of the, of what, of how much asbestos we have to deal with. So I can't really get, it's, I can't give an exact price as far as it's not, you know, again, they're going to be different, they'll be, they'll be less expensive depending on different square footages.
Further questions from counsel? Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Your Honor. Anyway, a couple of this also, but they're going to have different characteristics, correctly. This is not going to be, is this going to be, this isn't going to be a cookie cutter type of?
No, if you look at the different designs, they're all going to have a craftsman-style look to them, but if you look at the top one, that'll be more of a townhouse-style design. The, that lower one looks, it would be, would generally be more of a garden-style design, so they, they'll have, you know, we want to keep the campus cohesive, but not, but they're not going to be exactly the same, no.
Right, the question was more for the public to hear, so, thank you. Thank you very much.
And again, it'd be two-bedroom max, is what we're thinking.
Further questions from counsel? Any further questions from counsel? None being so, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We'll now move back to agenda item number four, which is public hearings, which is scheduled for this evening. Our first public hearing scheduled for this evening is ordinance number 524 to amend Chapter IV Personnel Rules and Regulations, Section 6.4 Transfer Between Departments in Section 7.2 Overtime. Anyone wish to speak in favor or against ordinance number 5-24 to amend Chapter IV Personnel Rules and Regulations, Section 6.4 Transfers Between Departments in Section 7.2 Overtime? Please come forward, state your name, your address, and the ward you live in, if you have that. applicable information. Anyone wish to speak or against ordinance number 524? None being so, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance number 524 and open the public hearing on ord, on resolution 2624, a vote to adopt the Summersworth Community Power Aggregation Plans to Utilize the City Manager to Submit the Plan with the New Hampshire Public Utilities Commission. Anyone wish to speak in favor or against resolution 26-24? A vote to adopt the Summersworth Community Power Aggregation Plan to Authorize the City Manager to Submit the Plan with the New Hampshire Public Utilities Commission. Who wish to speak in favor or against? None being so, I will close the public hearing on resolution 26-24. Brings us to agenda item number five, which is comments by visitors. The Summersworth City Council and Mayor's Office welcome all visitors or encourage you to voice your opinions and views at city council meetings. In accordance with Council Rule 7C, a time limit of five minutes per person shall be in effect unless the council wishes to suspend the rules. The speaker shall not enter into any debate with any person, the mayor, city council members, city manager or department heads. This time, we welcome comments by visitors. Please come forward, state your name, your address and the ward you live in if you have that applicable information. This would be a good time for those of you that have attended that, to dive in on the National Guard proposal if you wish to voice your opinion. Any comments by visitors this evening? Again, any comments by visitors? None being so, move us to agenda item number six, which is the consent calendar. Chair will obtain a motion on the consent calendar. Councilor Austin.
I'll move for the consent calendar to be adopted as presented.
Councilor Austin moves the consent calendar to be adopted as presented, seconded by Councilor Cameron. The question before the council is on the adoption of the consent calendar. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it and the consent calendar is adopted. Brings us to agenda item number seven, which is comments by counselors. Any comments by counselors this evening?
Your honor.
Counselor Witham.
And if you may indulge me to step forward here.
I would indulge whatever you would like, counselor, this evening. Doesn't look like I have control over it anyways.
So I think the last time I stood out here, I was talking about trash and recyclables. So tonight is a much more enjoyable occasion, so, your honor, if you'd join me out here, that would be great. For those watching at home or for those here tonight that are not aware, our mayor has served this great city as mayor for 10 years. He chose not to seek reelection, his own personally identified term limit, as he will tell you, with pride. And tonight is the last time that he will serve as our mayor here in these chambers. So it's a pretty special evening for us all. You know, your honor, your commitment to this city for the past 10 years, and really, it's gone on longer than 10 years. He's taught in our school systems for much longer than that, had a stint on the city council. Your level of civic engagement probably violated some youth employment law, I'm pretty sure. But when you think of Summersworth, you think of Mayor Dana Hilliard without question. For more than 10 years, you have championed to make our city a better place, one day at a time. And I can say, and I think my colleagues on council would say and city staff would say that you've achieved that goal. Check that box. You've done a tremendous job. You know, you did that by, I guess, setting a tone and a vision for how we conduct our business here in these chambers. I'm not sure how many times he's used the word teamwork over the years, but it's more than I can count and used more in this room than perhaps I ever did coaching a hockey team down in Dover. So the word means a lot. We've learned a lot from you. If you've been in these chambers before, you know the mayor takes great pride in his comments by mayor section of the council agenda. Those are often quite lengthy, we enjoy them. Wink, wink, right there, pretty long, right? They're long. It's funny because, you know, I'm not like a history guy. I suspect not. In school, I liked math and science. I tried to avoid the history classes, but as life would have it, I got them here. I've learned a lot from you and I thank you for that and I think that is true of my colleagues as well. We'll miss your strong parliamentary presence here in these chambers. I don't know of anybody, with all due respect to our mayors from the north and south that are with us here tonight, this guy knows his parliamentary procedure and he runs a pretty good meeting. You've been a strong leader and leaders lead with conviction, right? It's not always making the easy decision, but it's moving the community forward. I, I like to say that you've been forward-leaning in your role as mayor and that's not always easy to do. That's sometimes tough to do. You have to take the criticism that, that comes with that. You know, perhaps more than anything, our mayor, Dana Hilliard, has been an advocate. He's been an advocate for education, to be sure. Look at his career path, no surprise there. You've been an advocate for public safety. I know the police department recognized you earlier today and that was well-suited. You've brought our public safety personnel facilities into the 21st century, not alone, but by championing that word teamwork and getting it done through council. You've championed infrastructure, roads, sidewalks, bridges, a dog park and, you know, even a wastewater treatment plant, to be sure, right? Equally as important. But you know, along the way, you've championed other causes, like the homelessness issue. You've championed for those people that have housing insecurity. You've worked with the mayors of Dover and Rochester, the county commissioners and others to, to work on that issue. This region is better off today than it was even just two or three years ago, thanks in large part to your efforts. You've championed community pride and culture. Citizens Place, which you could throw a baseball and hit from here, the smallest parcel of land in the city, as you like to say, has a different flag flying all of the time. That was your vision, to champion our culture and our community pride. And you've championed along-the-way inclusion. You could take a short ride from here down by the Lions Club and look at that billboard down there. I think that speaks to that. I think history will show, your honor, that you've been one of the best mayors the Hilltop City has ever had, without question. Quite simply, you've been a lasting positive influence on this city that we will never forget. On behalf of myself, my colleagues here on the council, a heartfelt thank you, congratulations, well done, your honor, and more importantly, my friend. And to recognize you, it seems such, like such a small gift, but this chair that has the city CEO on it so that you can long remember your journey through these chambers as the city's mayor. And you also need a key to get into different things and I'm not sure how many keys to the city have ever been presented, but I think we could probably count them on one hand, make that five now. So there you go. It's now one hand of keys here to the city. At this time, I'd like to invite forward, I'll start with Mayor Callahan from Rochester, who would like to offer a few words.
Thank you. I'll use this. Sure. Good evening, counselors. You can stand, please. City Manager Bellmore, nice to see you again, Mayor-elect Gerting. On behalf of the city, a roster of accommodation for Mayor Hilliard. It is with great pride and admiration that we extend our congratulations to Mayor Dana Hilliard for his exceptional dedication and service to the city Summersworth and the tri-city community. Mayor Hilliard's unwavering commitment to public service throughout the years has left an indelible mark and inspired countless individuals. Mayor Hilliard's career in local and state politics spans an impressive 30 years, marked by significant impact and impactful contributions. His devotion to public service led to five terms in New Hampshire House of Representatives, three terms in city council. Mayor Hilliard's inauguration in 2014 heralded an era of visionary leadership change. His fifth and final term stands as a testament to the trust and admiration he has earned for the greater community. Throughout his tenure, Mayor Hilliard has been a beacon for progress, making history as the city of New Hampshire's first openly gay mayor. His leadership has been instrumental in fostering unity among the tri-cities of Summersworth, Rochester and Dover, culminating in the establishment and funding of the Willand Warming Center, a testament to Hilliard's dedication to addressing the needs of our community's most vulnerable members. Moreover, Mayor Hilliard's 22-year tenure with the Summersworth School District, notably as the middle school principal, underscores his deep-rooted commitment to the education and welfare of the next generation. Mayor Hilliard's ability to bring together diverse voices, fostering unity and mobilize citizens toward a shared vision for Summersworth's ongoing revitalization is nothing short of impressive and stands as an example for other communities throughout the region. In recognition of Mayor Dana Hilliard's contribution to the city of Summersworth and the tri-cities, the city of Rochester extends our gratitude. His legacy of selfish service and inclusive leadership will continue to resonate within the tri-city community for years to come. Now therefore, I, Mayor Paul Callahan, do hereby offer my sincere congratulations to Mayor Dana Hilliard for all his accomplishments and the legacy he has earned over the years. Congratulations, brother.
Thanks, brother. See you, man. I guess Mayor Carrier and Commissioner McGlarus are flipping a coin as to who's going to go next.
Thank you. Nice job.
Bob Carrier from Dover.
Don't go anywhere. So, you know, before I came here tonight, I thought the mayor said we were going to have a movie night. The screen went down. I thought I smelt popcorn, but.
We have cupcakes.
We have cupcakes. Well, Mr. City Manager, counselors and especially Mayor Hilliard, gives me incredible pleasure to come here tonight, but I have mixed feelings because we hate to see you go, with all due respect, Matt. You've done tremendous. Now upon the city of Dover, I have a small proclamation here that I'd like to read. I'm here tonight representing the city of Dover and expressing, expressing my sincere respect and appreciation for all that Mayor Dana Hilliard has done. I first engaged with Dana about eight years ago, becoming involved with, in addressing the existing issues of homelessness, drug addiction and mental health problems. Together, we established a tri-city coalition involving Dover, Summersworth and Rochester. To this day, we continue to work closely together to develop positive solutions. Mayors Paul Callahan, Dana Hilliard and I have cultivated a close working bond. We frequently meet with county commissioners, city managers, welfare staff. Dana's expertise in the guidelines we have formulated and implemented is invaluable. Although Dana has chosen not to run for mayor another term, we will still seek out his valuable guidance. Additionally, we look forward to collaborating with Summersworth newly-elected mayor and the council and continue this growth. Dana, don't go anywhere because we know where you are and we will, we will lean on you for advice because that's what, you are a resident of Summersworth, your heart's in Summersworth and we need you to be still proactive in Summersworth to help Rochester, Dover and all other communities with these problems and other problems. But Dana, I mean, you know, you've done so much. I respect you highly. You have taught me a lot. I watch you on the council and how you address the council and the residents and it's, it's all the experience you have. It's perfect. It's great. So Dana, you know, with all due respect, I, I, you know, it's hard to say goodbye, but you're not going anywhere.
Thanks, Paul. Thanks, man.
There you go.
We're going to go towards Jenny. We're going to pick.
And last but not least, Commissioner of Stratford County, Commissioner Chair George McGlarus.
I first want to. Right. I first want to extend happy holidays to the city council and the people of Summersworth. I hope they have a great, warm holiday season. And when I learned yesterday that this was Dana's last meeting, I thought I'd better show up here. But simply put, Dana, I appreciate your friendship and kindness over many, many decades. We've been friends a long time and I've enjoyed working with you. I think we've become a long ways in trying to, trying to handle some of the most difficult social problems that our region faces and you did so with kindness in your heart and a vision that we all share of taking care of our people. And you've done such a great job in Summersworth over the past many years. I've had a opportunity, I've been around a while, so I've known a lot of Summersworth mayors. I consider them all my personal friends, as I consider you my personal friend. So I wish you the best of luck. I know you're not going anywhere, but I just want to take it, I just wanted to come here and, and thank you for your kindness, not only for the people of Summersworth, but the, for the people of the county and our state. So congratulations in your future endeavors.
Thank you. I left the fancy proclamations for the two politicians over here.
It's truly, truly an honor. Amazing friendships, amazing pathways and I am leaving, the same way I came in, with a team and a team approach. We have modeled within the tri-city area what democracy is all about. In this time when democracy is under assault, when democracy is being questioned, when the foundation and the roots are falling apart, it is reassuring to go to bed every night that within the tri-city area, we are modeling the strength of what our founders created and modeling how it works and it is the tri-city area and Stratford County that is leading, not Washington. We are the model of what democracy is truly about and how, when we work together as a team, when we shed party differences, that we can truly make a difference for people's lives and improve the communities that we love. Thank you. Comments by counselors? Counselor Peppin.
Thank you. I was told tonight, right, I was shocked, beating that I had to come up with a speech for you. So there's nothing really long about this. Dana, I think the first time I ever knew about you is basically my kids went to school with you, so I'm showing my age right now. So I knew more about your dad because your dad worked at the Housing Authority and he was always in the station because of different things that needed to be done at the Housing Authority and, and things like that. And I knew your mom very well from smiling faces at the bank when you go to cash your check or whatever, so I got to know you there. And then you invited me one time, I don't know if you remember it, but in your history class, and I don't know if it was a history class on the city of Summersworth or if it was part of the fire station, I can't quite remember, so that's showing you my age. But I know you had me as a speaker of, and I, I do know how much those students really cared about you. I mean, it showed, showed from that day on. You got promoted to vice-principal into Summersworth High School. My wife worked under you as a teacher's aide. She had nothing but praise about you. The whole attitude of that whole school, that whole high school basically changed. I know you served as principal at the middle school, totally different. There was a total different attitude in that school, totally different things, and I know how many students that you touched, touched in that. And my personal thoughts here is, I think everybody knows that I live, breathe fire department, even though I am retired from there. I'd like to thank you personally for what you've done for the fire station. I mean, you did the feasibility studies, which I was very privileged on having you appoint me in the feasibility committee to see if we needed a new station and also you put me on the building committee to actually see that station come, the lot come to life and that's very, very important. One thing that I didn't mention here that with, Councilman Witham basically covers just about everything, but you missed the Veterans Park. That is outstanding. I was down there last week because of the historical society on Wednesday, I think it was Wednesday night, and it was lit up at night because it's really the first time I was, walked right by it at night to actually see what it looked like and it is beautiful. Secondly, is I like to. to thank you for all your support that you have given me personally. And throughout this thing, I have never known anybody that knows Robert's rules inside out as like you do. And a second thought, you are going to be deeply missed. I don't think people realize how many people that you have touched, how much stuff that you have done for this city, and it is deeply appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Further comments by councilors? Counselor Vincent.
You know, I don't even know if I like you. I love you as a friend. That's what I'm trying to get at. And let me just say this. Of any of the councilors here, I have challenged you, I think, the most. And you had said to me one time, you said, "You know what? You act like your father." "Yeah, Vince. You act like Vince, my father." But you said something to me that really, that was really at heart. Even though my father had questioned you and went head-to-head with you, at the end of it, you're still friends, and that's how I look at it. We may challenge each other, but you know what? After it's all said and done, we wash our hands and we move on. It seems like everything you've touched has been really well. You know, I'm not going to go over... And by the way, I'd like to thank the previous speakers for leaving nothing for the rest of us to talk about. Thank you. But you know what? They had a problem at the high school, didn't they? And they counted on... They went to you, and you and Mrs. Lamprose went and fixed that. Then they had issues at the middle school. You went and fixed that, too. So, you know, we won't get into that scene, but you know what? You've done a lot for this city, and I thank you very much, my man. Take care of yourself.
Thank you. Further comments by councilors? Counselor Gibson. I will get to you. I promise.
I really hate to see you go. And one of the reasons is because we have a history. 14 years on the school board dealing with you, now here on the council dealing with you. But I think the most important thing was your ability to convert people from enemies into friends. And I started out originally as probably a dedicated enemy. But once I worked with you on the school board and saw what you did and who you were, I had nothing but respect for you. And I think that's your biggest legacy, is the ability to convert people. And I thank you for that experience.
Thank you, Bob, and thanks for being a great friend. Further comments by councilors? Counselor Austin.
Thank you. I agree. A lot has been said, but Dana, you and I go back a long way, as does Counsel Gibson with you. I think that I've always known you to be a man of vision, as opposed to trying to always implement what somebody else wants you to do. You've taken the reins in many situations and said, "This isn't working. We're going to change it, and here's how it's going to look," when maybe it was something that you were implementing it was going to take five or 10 years to get done, but you knew what that end game was going to look like even before we got started. It's very few people who have that kind of vision and can follow it through from beginning to end to its implementation. And one of the things that I always look back on is at the middle school where we worked to transition that from a junior high to a middle school. And the whole philosophy of those two entities is completely different. And you worked very hard and very successfully in making that a middle school environment versus a junior high school environment. And so many other accomplishments at the school level and at the city level, many of us have or will speak to those. But I wouldn't be here on the city council if it wasn't for you. I think that through, again, through your vision and leadership, we sort of progressed our relationship from at the school level to the broader city level, and I think that's, to me, that's been very important. And I will actually have more to say in my closing comments about our relationship, but with that, thank you very much for your service to the city.
Thank you, counselor. Further comments by councilors? Counselor Mischu.
Thank you, Your Honor. Your Honor, you're the reason that I'm sitting here. 10 years ago, if someone had came up and told me that I'll be sitting here, I would have told them they're absolutely crazy. But as when you came on, I see the positive image you brought to this community. You brought pride, made the citizens be proud of who they are being part of Somersworth. And after a couple of terms you had, the seat happened to open up, and I said, "I want to be a part of that team, and because of you, I am sitting here." So I just want to thank you. Thank you for everything you've done for this community, and I'm sure you're going to be doing a lot more behind the scenes. And also, thank you very much for your friendship. I know you won't be sitting there after tonight, but I know our friendship will go on beyond that. So thank you for everything.
Absolutely. Thank you. Further comments by councilors? Counselor Girding.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mayor Hilliard, this council is the way that it is because of you. The amount of teamwork that you have instilled in all of us shows tonight by how much, just how proud we all are of you. And I think that this city is the same that it is today because of you. You are inclusive and a trailblazer. You were the first gay mayor, openly gay mayor, in the state of New Hampshire, and I am so proud to soon follow you as the second one, which is crazy to me that I'm the second one. How is it 2023 and there's only been two of us? But it's because of you. You were number one, and it is unbelievable the amount of effort and the amount of probably adversity you had to go through to get to that point, and I thank you so much. Your inclusive nature shines through wherever you are, whether you are bringing that philosophy to school when you were my middle school principal. That was a no-brainer. We were open, inclusive, proud, happy, nobody putting anybody down, and it built this strong sense of culture and community within the school. And I see that strong sense of culture and community throughout this city, thanks to you. You are an educator. You've been an educator for me. You've taught me as a city counselor more than I can count, more things than I can count. You've taught me so much as an educator myself. I remember even just like you, you know, kind of took a risk on me as an early, young teacher way back many, many years ago, even after getting punched in the chest by a student at S Y C, still willing to let old Matt Girding, who just stood there stunned, "This kid just punched me. Oh my God," to still put your faith in me and know that, you know, I had it in me to do great things as a teacher. And I feel so, so thankful for your guidance through all of that, through everything here on council. I'm so, so thankful for that. I think what is most important to emphasize tonight, though, and a lot has been said, but I really believe that above all else, you did all of this, whether your work as mayor, whether your work as a city councilor, whether your work as an educator. You did all of it in a selfless way. It was never for you. It was always, every single time, every decision that you made was for this community and the people that live here, and I cannot thank you enough for that because it is so easy to get bogged down by your own decision-making, your own willingness to do this, that, or the other thing, and forget about why you are doing it. And you never forgot that. And I know you will continue to never forget that and continue to be just a community member at heart who does things for the benefit of others and not for yourself. And I thank you so, so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Nancy, as promised.
Thank you.
Cameron.
I may sound a little repetitious in some of what I had planned to say to you tonight, so just bear with me, and if I cry, just look over that. We go way back, too, to when we were class advisors back in the high school. So that's a little bit where our friendship started, but then went far beyond that. How do you thank a decade of service to the Hilltop City? It's hard to put into words. The accomplishments that have taken place, and I've been fortunate enough to have been a part of this for the past eight years. We have collectively, as a group, confronted adversity head-on, made strides in economic development while keeping our values intact. We have had failures and successes, but because of your leadership, we have overcome, and our proud Hilltop are blue. You instilled in us a team approach to government, which we reference frequently, creating a unique collaboration. We've celebrated our cultural background and Hilltop history. We've consistently made sure to invest in the leaders of tomorrow, our children's futures, by investing in schools, upgrades, technology, and the Career Technical Center. You've guided us through many upgrades: roads, sidewalks, and my personal favorite, the Ash Street Butterfly Project, and of course, the dog park. We have turned the city of Somersworth, the best-kept secret on the seacoast, into a community of citizens that value your favorite saying, neighbor helping neighbor. We are a proud past and a bright future. Your legacy of all the things aforementioned will continue long after we are no longer here. Your Hilltop are blue blood will always be your strength. Your unwavering commitment to this city is greatly appreciated by the citizens of Somersworth who have elected you for a decade. Eyes on 30 will continue alongside the master plan, creating the vision for Somersworth in 2030. Thank you for always keeping us on the move. God bless you, Mayor Hilliard, and your family. May the spirit of Christmas bring you joy all year long. I hope we all learn from your leadership, keeping the top of pride, moving forward in our 10 square miles. From the words of my favorite, "What if Christmas, he thought, doesn't come from a store? What if Christmas perhaps means a little bit more? As his heart grew three times its size, yours does too." I honor and thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Dennis, Counselor Messier.
Thank you. The best for last, which makes it easy for me because I could say, "Dana, Your Honor, I agree with everything that was said tonight. I particularly want to thank you for your commitment to our community as a whole, everything you've done, the school systems, personally helping family members, myself. I think I've been here eight of your 10 years, so we've had this ride together for a while. So good luck in the future, and we'll see you."
Thank you all. And again, thank you. It's never been about me, and it never will. Will continue to be about community, and this community is blessed because of each and every one of you. So thank all of you. Do you know, we... I'll do that at the... Under the council ones. We have done, moving back to the agenda, we have done agenda item number eight, which is communications. We have no presentation of petitions, which is agenda item number nine. I will move back to the regular mayor's report just so I can get that out of the way. You know, I'm a stickler with the agenda. I do appreciate all the accolades this evening, but I want to get to the agenda, too. So I'll get to my final mayor's report so we can get back to work here. Honorable members of the council, I submit to you my final mayor's report for Monday, December 11, 2023. 10 years ago, our greatest challenge was ourself. While the history of Somersworth is rooted in overcoming adversity, as a collective citizenry, our history equally reflects an abandonment of continuing the final push each time we almost reach the top of the summit. The spirits of our ancestors from the First Nations, English, French Canadians, Irish, and Greeks, continue to guide, push, and encourage from the world of the spirits. Yet, it is we who map the course of our destiny. Over the last decade, we found the courage to confront the inner demons which have sabotaged the advancement of our collective success. We obtained community enlightenment when we realized that the ingredients to building a home we could all be proud of is not becoming like someone else. Instead, it is holding steady fast to the values we know as the Hilltopper spirit. It is these values which have been the bedrock of our strength, our forward pathway, and our future success. Each gain, each failure, they are ours to create and ours to own. So we went forward, not as individuals seeking accolades or self-proclamation, but as a dedicated team willing to surrender the "I" in exchange for the "we," ready to claim wins for the team rather than one's personal scorecard. It was through this change in perspective and the shift of paradigm that we discovered our potential while also discovering the determination we would harvest. The determination to overcome the obstacles in individuals who still see Somersworth as their personal playground, a playground of selfishness, egos, dishonesty, and self-motivation. However, the strength of the flame of our determination to build Somersworth for all would not fall victim to their tactics. Instead, we stepped forward. With each step forward, we strengthened. We created. We built. We strengthened our local government by installing a team approach to governing. Through legislation, we created the Joint Commission of the Council and the School Board, worked in sync with the city manager and city employees, and created a mayor and council built upon trust and collaboration. We strengthened our greatest asset, our vast cultural diversity, through celebrating each other and how differences reinforce the fabric which binds us all together. As a reflection of that strength, we saved the historical object rooted in the Hilltopper culture and history, the Ten Commandments Monument. With the monument at its base, we created Citizens Place, the smallest section of land in the smallest city in the state. Since its creation, Citizens Place has proudly waved and displayed flags of our differences, differences which modeled the creed of our nation of how we can and must all coexist together. We strengthened our commitment to the next generation of Hilltoppers by investing in our schools, securing capital improvements, and making sure each of our students have the tools necessary to compete in a global economy. We built, investing in Somersworth and its future with over $10 million in roads and sidewalk upgrades, to the wastewater treatment plant, revitalization of all city parks, and the creation of a new veterans memorial and a butterfly and pollinator garden which will soon adorn our city. We built a strong, dedicated force of first responders, giving them a 21st-century equipment and pay they deserve. From fire apparatus, cruises, and a K-9 unit to radios and, yes, a new fire station, our first responders are among some of the best-equipped and best-trained, ensuring Somersworth remains safe. We created a city, a community, a home that all of us can be proud of, one that lives up to the values of the Hilltopper spirit reflected in its motto of proud past and bright future. Leadership is not about self. It is about others. And over the last 10 years, we have proven that we understand and we are committed to instituting and protecting what makes Somersworth great. Somersworth, my time as your mayor is quickly ended. As you are aware, as a proponent of term limits, I did not seek reelection. Instead, I model my values, the values that democracy is to be respected and that the elected office is about service to others and not about self. I entered this office with the same level of commitment and belief in Somersworth that I will exit with. Somersworth, our future and success will continue to be rooted in the belief in ourselves, in the dedication to our community and to each other. While many of our citizens will never surrender these values, be wary of those who wish to use Somersworth for their own narcissistic purposes, from businesses not to get committed to our community, to seeking and serving an office with a hidden agenda or pathway to clearly destroy all that we hold sacred as part of our identity. Somersworth, hold strong to who you are. Somersworth, hold strong to who you are, continue to step forward and climb, and when we reach the summit, enjoy the view. Look out of the vast horizon and acknowledge all who have guided us and sacrificed so that we could reach the peak. We are 10-square miles of a proud past, we are 10-square miles of a bright future, we are 10-square miles of diversity with a citizenry dedicated to each other. Somersworth, our demons have been conquered. We re-strengthen ourself with the belief in each other, and we will continue our pathway to greatness and success. Somersworth, we are more than a city, we are more than a community, we are truly a home. Thank you for 10 years of your belief and commitment to me, as I served as your mayor. Together, guided by the Hilltopper spirit, let us continue our climb. God bless each and every one of you, and God bless these 10-square miles we call Somersworth. This respectfully concludes. David, stop it. My final mayor's report. All right, thank you. On to Agenda Item Number 11, Reports of Standing Committees. We will start with the Finance Committee, Counselor Witham.
No report of finance this evening, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
See you soon.
Yes, absolutely.
Another meeting tomorrow?
Yes, we will see you tomorrow night. See you tomorrow night, Mr. Chairman. Moving on to Government Operations, Counselor Mason.
We have not met, your honor.
Thank you, Counselor. Moving on to Economic Development, Chairperson Counsel Austin.
Thank you, your honor. We have had two meetings since our last council meeting, so I'd like to report on both of those, please.
Without objection.
The first one was on November 29 at 5:00 here in the City Council chambers. It was a joint meeting of the EDC with the Historic District Commission, and many members of that commission were present, along with Counselor David Witham. Counselor Gibson was excused from that meeting. We approved the minutes of the prior meeting from September 19 and spent the next 90 minutes having a workshop with the HDC in discussion of Ordinance 424, which we will be looking at later this evening. It was a -- I'm glad we had this meeting. I think I learned a lot. One of the things that I took away from that meeting from an economic standpoint was that when you look at redevelopment of the historic buildings in the HDC area, there are grants available, if you follow the rules within Historic District, that are no longer available if the buildings are outside of Historic District, and that may actually convince some developers not to redevelop those buildings and that land, because those grants are not available to them to offset the costs of construction and things like that. So, I'm not sure I understood that prior to this workshop. That's one thing that rang true to me. It was also clear, as we moved through the discussion, that there's some ambiguity in the way the HDC rules and the forms-based codes work together. And one of the things the committee is recommending is that as we move forward, that the next administration consider creating a commission, if you will, that will look at how those two, at the HCC and form-based codes, how they can interact more closely for new construction as well as for existing reconstruction. We don't want to lose that. That was an important piece that we want to make sure continues. That was a very worthwhile discussion. In the end, Counselor Gerting made a motion to recommend to the full council not to adopt Ordinance 424. The motion was seconded and passed by the committee members 3 to 0, so our recommendation is not to adopt Ordinance 424. Second meeting was actually held this evening, just prior to City Council meeting, 6:15 in the Executive Conference Room. We approved the minutes from the November 29 meeting, and then we reviewed an application from Wentworth Douglas Hospital Facility at the Somersworth Plaza right in back of us here. They are looking to replace their existing signage to bring the signs up-to-date with their partnership with Mass General, yeah, Mass General. So, in effect, they are replacing the signs in the exact sizes, exact same locations that they are. So, there was no -- there was some discussion whether zoning board involvement did happen here, and it does not, because it's a one-for-one replacement. Their original proposal had asked to make one of the signs larger than it is. That would have required zoning board approval. They had amended their application so that they didn't need to do that. After some discussion, the committee voted to approve that application unanimously, and we adjourned at 6:30.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Moves us to Public Safety. Counselor Peppin.
I have nothing to report this evening, ma'am.
Thank you, Counselor. Brings us to Public Works and the Environment. Chairperson Counsel Witham.
Thank you. Public Works and Environment Committee met on November 29 at 4:00. All members were in attendance, as well as a number of city staff. First item on our agenda dealt with Coles Pond Road. I think, as counsel is aware, Coles Pond Road has been identified somewhat recently as a private way here in the city. I say that it was recognized only recently, because for a number of years, the city at least plowed that roadway, though it was a private road. I think it was an error, right? And it's just one of those habits that continues winter after winter when it would snow. After the determination that it is a private way, we continued plowing through last winter, but the residents of Coles Pond Road were notified that that would be our last winter of plowing, as it's technically not legal for us to expend public monies on a private way. That communication went forward, all was seemingly good. The residents of Coles Pond Road formed an association to do maintenance on the road, I would assume to include plowing this winter, but that maintenance actually started this year with some improvements to the gravel surface of the road. My understanding is they added graded some gravel on Coles Pond Road to improve its drivability. The residents of the association sent the city a request to pay our portion, because apparently there is a, I believe it is a house lot, albeit small, on Coles Pond Road owned by the city of Somersworth. We are not a member of the association. There is no legal obligation for us to contribute to this maintenance. We got a communication from city attorney with regard to that. So, we discussed it at the committee level. We don't plan on sharing in the cost of the maintenance of the roadway, and further action by the new council will be to consider perhaps selling that piece of property ultimately. It serves no value for the city. We're not even sure why we perhaps own it, but we do. So, more to come on that. We discussed the gas line work being done by Unitil on Maple Street. As you know, they constructed a new gas line on Blackwater Road going by the National Guard property site, and they've now connected that, or are in the process of connecting that, to their new transmission substation in the Turcot Pit off of Maple Street. They'll be removing their substation on the corner of Bartlett Avenue, so this gets it off the beaten path, not in the public view. It's a safer location, so on and so forth. As you know, we waived the pavement moratorium for them to allow to continue to do work this time of year. The good news is they are off the roadway, they're down into the pit area, that work continues. The work that you see out there, the update was to note that the sidewalk repair and road repair that happened this year is considered temporary in nature because of the time of year. They will reengage in the spring of the year and reconstruct the sidewalk section along Maple Street that was disturbed. They also plan to mill and overlay all of the trench cuts in the roadways to include Blackwater Road up near the signal where we've identified it's not done particularly well. So, you know, great news is, Unitil seems to be very responsive to our identified needs. We had an update on the CMAC project, which is the upgrades to all of the signalized intersections from the Dover Line right down to Blackwater Road. That work is identified as being about 80% complete. If you've driven the corridor in the last couple of weeks, crews have been out there pretty steadily. They look to continue the work in the coming couple of weeks to try to bring that to an endpoint. Once they believe they're at an endpoint, there'll be a walk-through by city staff and the engineering firm overseeing the project, determining any punch list items, and working from there to do better programming of the signals to expedite traffic flow through the corridor, which is one of the primary goals of this project, along with safety. So, that work continues. At the request of New Hampshire DOT, we had a discussion on the Route 108 Complete Streets project, which continues to move its way through engineering. We had to make some decisions on elements regarding crosswalks and sidewalks and lighting. We provided direction to city staff, which I think was very consistent to what was shared at the public hearing, and city staff will communicate that back to DOT. We had a discussion of a number of miscellaneous items, one of which was the water meter replacement program. That process has started and will continue through the winter months. Basically, any home in the city will have their water meters replaced unless the home was built within the last couple of years. So, the firm doing that work will reach out to the residents and schedule that work. Obviously, it requires coming into the residence to do that, as water meters are most typically located in the basement. We had a brief discussion about the Hamilton Street Water Storage Tank, the water tank up at the pines, and the continued progress with regard to engineering for replacement of that. We had a discussion about cybersecurity for our water and wastewater infrastructure. Director Smith indicated that we've had audits done on both of those, so we feel that we're well-positioned there. We had a discussion about parking in the downtown, the concern being parking spaces that are time-limited, whether it's 15 minutes, 30 minutes, or two hours, that are being taken up by people that might live in the area for the entire day. One of the business owners suggested a pay-and-display. Although it sounded novel, the conversation was, it's still an enforcement issue, right? So, whether you have pay-and-display or your chalking tires, it's an enforcement issue. I think it's generally recognized that we perhaps need more enforcement hours, and that might be a subject for action by the future city council to see if we can expand hours of parking enforcement in the community. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Brings us to Recreation Chair, Counselor Cameron.
I have nothing to report, your honor.
Thank you, Counselor. Brings us to Agenda Item Number 12, which is Reports of Special Committees. Any reports of special committees? Counselor Gerting, and Cameron, and then Counselor Austin.
Thank you, your honor.
Counselor Gerting.
The Somersworth Community Power Committee met on Thursday, December 7 at 5:00 p.m. We met for the purpose of having the first of two public hearings, the second of which was held tonight. So, again, started our agenda by approving our previous meeting minutes, which were approved, I believe, 4:0. After that, we had our public hearing regarding the resolution. That's before us tonight, Resolution Number 26-24. We had no individuals speak in regards to the Community Power public hearing at that time, but we did have a presentation, the same presentation we received tonight, from Henry Herndon from CPCNH. So, thank you, Henry, again, for your presentation. After that, we had miscellaneous, where I believe we just discussed a few items related to process and how this resolution would move forward through council, and then we closed. That was all.
Question, if I may?
Without objection.
Am I not inaccurate, Mr. Chair, that we should vote to suspend rules on that this evening to get the ball rolling?
Thank you for the reminder. Yes, we should hopefully, if council is in favor of this, suspend rules to have a second reading on that resolution tonight, so that we can hit the January timeline for this to head to the Public Utilities Commission for the state of New Hampshire, who will then ultimately approve our plan, so that we can be on track to join for June of next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further reports of special committees? Counselor Cameron, and then Austin. Counselor Cameron.
Thank you, your honor. Eyes on 30 met on December 6, and I will say, it's the fastest meeting I ever had, because we had shop with a cop. So, we were 15 minutes and done. I had invited my friend from Dover, Deb Cloud, who had started a Don't Trash Dover program, and I had been talking about implementing one in Somersworth as part of our beautification and keeping Somersworth clean. So, she came over, told us a little bit about the program, how she got it started. They meet once a month, one hour on whatever day you choose, and they go around picking up trash in designated areas. And it was funny, because before she came over to the meeting, she had driven down behind Irving and Home Depot there, and there was a nice pile of trash over there. So, she had kind of said, yeah, we could use a program like that here. So, I'm going to meet with her after the first of the year, see about getting a program going here. It might start out small, and then we may get some people to join us, but that's going to be one of our goals for Eyes on 30. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further reports of special committees? Counselor Austin.
Thank you, your honor. I was attending the school board meeting on November 28, and Superintendent announced that the National Gypsum Corporation has made a donation to the Somersworth High School Career Technical Center of $30,000. Caitlin Carrington reported that there's a committee in place now to determine how best to utilize that money, but it's not very often that a corporation gives that kind of donation, so I wanted to recognize them publicly. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further reports of special committees? Any further reports of special committees? None being so. City Manager.
Thank you, your honor. Members of council, I have for the following comments that were included in my written report for this evening's agenda. And I think I'll jump right over to new business. Ordinance 624 is next year's meeting schedule. It was prepared with the help of the mayor-elect and also Mayor Hilliard. So, I respect the request of the council, consider waiving its rules to provide a second reading and vote this evening, so we have a calendar for next year. Under Ordinance 724, amend Chapter 13, Police Offenses, Traffic Control. The Traffic and Safety Committee met on September 9 and recommends these ordinance changes. The two-hour parking was put into place back when General Electric was active. Therefore, the two-hour limit is no longer needed in this area, according to the Police Department and the committee as a whole. Also, if approved, the Lord's Court change would allow residents along the road to park there during months when snow plowing does not occur. There's some residents up there that worked through Counselor Gerting for us to look at this, and we're comfortable in making the recommendation that we just restrict parking to when there's no snow plowing. So, we basically go from April 15 to November 15, it would be allowed. Under Resolutions 25-24 is to authorize the manager to enter a grant agreement with the New Hampshire Community Development Finance Authority to make certain building structure and site improvements at the Somersworth Early Learning Center. Stratford Regional Planning Commission will be the grant administrator for this project. Once approved, the grant agreement will need to go to governor and council for final approval. This process can take some significant time, and the council approved, also, just underscored, the council approved the grant application after a public hearing, so it's been vetted out in public. You've already voted on to make the application. So, in order to keep this ball moving forward, I respectfully suggest you consider waiving council rules to provide a second reading and a vote this evening. Under Resolution 26-24 is the vote to adopt the Somersworth Community Power Aggregation Plan and to authorize the manager to submit the plan to the New Hampshire PUC. I think we've heard enough about this during the presentation, and... I think we've heard enough about this during the presentation and committee reports, so I'll just jump on to the next thing, which is to accept the newly-constructed sidewalk on Tri-City Road. The Public Works Environment Committee met on October sixteenth, and I kind of teed it up at that point, and they voted to recommend accepting this road once it was built to city standards and satisfaction. And attaches a memorandum from City Engineer Amber Hall that indicates that it has been completed, both the curbing and the sidewalk, to city standards. Under other, vote to appoint Finance Director Smith as the city rep to the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire, and the manager as the city alternate representative, and this was supported by our Community Power Committee. Some informational items. In accordance with the city charter, I hereby submit my proposed capital improvement program for city council consideration. I look forward to council's direction for future review and discussion opportunities. And we have added the FY twenty-five to FY thirty CIP to your Google Drive, and also hardbound copies in your mailbox here at City Hall, if you haven't already picked it up. Fiscal year, the next fiscal year, 2025 budget prep. I provided you a memorandum directing city department heads to begin their preliminary budget requests for the next fiscal year, and as always, I welcome any specific council direction as I prepare the city manager's proposed budget for submittal to you by this charter deadline of March fifteenth, 2024. I did send out an email regarding the tax rate and the analysis that was provided by Director Scott Smith, and I suspect that all of you have received your tax bills, as I have, so you're well aware of that. EPA Brownfield's grant application, the former Prince's Garage on Main Street. City staff has submitted grant application in the amount of seven-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand-eight-hundred for Brownfield's cleanup grant for the property at two-sixty-one Main Street. Grants awards will be announced by EPA in the spring of next year. As you may recall, you authorized this action in a public-private partnership vote earlier in last year, this year, rather. Last, I'll add one more thing for informational purposes. As you know, former Fire Chief Judge Kremlinger has submitted his resignation from the city, and I publicly want to provide a thank you for service to the community. And I will mention that recruitment for this new, for a new permanent fire chief is commencing this week, as preparation for AS and that sort of thing has been completed. Additionally, former Rochester, New Hampshire Fire Chief Mark Delner will be serving as interim fire chief over the next several months while we recruit for a new fire chief, and he'll be starting this week on Wednesday. That concludes my report, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Your Honor, a question of the manager, if I may?
Without objection.
Resolution twenty-seven, twenty-four regarding the sidewalk on Tri-City Road. It might make sense to suspend rules on that, so that if we have a plowing need between now and the next meeting?
Yes, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Brings us to Agenda Item Number Thirteen, which is Nomination Appointments and Elections. We have none to bring forward this evening. Brings us to Agenda Item Number Fourteen, which is Items Which Have Been Laid Upon the Table. We have nothing upon the table. Brings us to Agenda Item Number Fifteen, which is Unfinished Business. Chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on Ordinance Number Four-twenty-four.
Ordinance Number Four-twenty-four, to amend Chapter Nineteen, Zoning, Section Nineteen-point-three-point-D, District Boundaries, and Section Nine-point-fourteen, Nineteen-point-fourteen-point-C, Point Three, District Boundaries.
Ordinance Number Four-twenty-four, having been ready first and second time, is open to further amendment. No amendment being offered, the chair will obtain a motion on Ordinance Number Four-twenty-four. Counselor Austin.
I move that we do not adopt Ordinance Four-twenty-four.
Counselor Austin moves that Ordinance Number Four-twenty-four not be adopted, seconded by Counselor Gibson. Discussion. Counselor Gibson.
I think before we make any moves on the historic district, that we need a comprehensive review involving both the community members that reside in the district that are interested in participating, as well as the members of the district commission and staff as needed. I want to thank Counselor Widdam for putting this on the agenda to start with. It's something that needs to be discussed, but I think it needs a more in-depth review before we take any action, pro or con on it. Thank you.
Question for the council is on not adopting Ordinance Number Four-twenty-four. Further discussion. Counselor Girding.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, I absolutely agree. I was in attendance at that meeting, and there was a ton of discussion in regards to how best approach the district, other than shrinking its size. The number of ideas were really, I think, indicative of the fact that we cannot be inactive on this issue, but perhaps the ordinance change before us tonight was not the answer to the problems that we were seeing. So, as was mentioned in the minutes that were read earlier, I plan, as mayor-elect, once I am officially in office, to announce a committee or commission that will study the historic district and some potential changes that could be made to make, you know, the process and make the commission operate more smoothly. So, please stay tuned for that announcement in the next coming month.
Question for the council is on not adopting Ordinance Number Four-twenty-four. Further discussion. Counselor Widdam.
Thank you. Yes, I sponsored this change to the ordinance. You know, I think a lot of things were brought to light as we watched the eighty-five Elm Street project navigate its way through the historic district process, in addition to planning board, site review, technical committee, and all of that. And what it did is, it turned up, for me anyways, it turned up the volume on this background noise that has been in these chambers, and frankly, in this community, Your Honor, before you were mayor, right? This noise about the HDC and how it's an impediment, it gets in the way, it's subjective in nature, again, it's been this, it's like a hum in the background, right? You're trying to figure out where it's coming from, right? It's, which says to me it's been a problem, and again, eighty-five Elm Street just turned the volume up on that, right? So, I introduced this ordinance, right? My gut tells me this is still the right thing to do, to reduce the size of the historic district. That's what my gut tells me. But I attended that workshop that the EDC had with the HDC, a lot of acronyms here, which then tells my brain that my gut is wrong, right? So, my brain's telling me one thing, and my gut's telling me another, which is true right now, right? It's sort of like a multiple-choice test for any that have taken those, I suspect most of us, at some point in time, right? And you circle B, but then you start to look at the others, and then you start to maybe change your mind. Someone once told me, always stick with your first answer, right? I'm probably not going to tonight. I'm not going to stick with my first answer. I hope I'm not wrong, and I'm only not doing that because of what the incoming mayor is hoping to do with a deeper dive and look at this, because the noise is still present. It's not gone away, and we need to somehow quiet it down. So, I'll leave it at that.
Question for the council is on not adopting Ordinance Number Four-twenty-four. Further discussion. Counselor Pepin, Mishu, and then Vincent. Counselor Pepin.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. As far as I'm concerned, like, this downtown area was, Historic Society basically crashed itself back in nineteen seventy-four, sixty-four and sixty-five, when Urban Renewal came in. They took down the most historical buildings in Summersworth. I think it was the first brick mill buildings that were ever built in New England at the time. There was a lot of history there. I remember it, so, you know, but, and I guess what really irks me is that this Elm Street project, that basically all the loops and things. I think it hurts me to see us trying to bring in people to upgrade our community and have to go through what they've gone through and all the things. Do I think certain buildings ought to be protected? My friend thought is that the Hills Historic District, that's the only ones that really have any history back to it, as far as going way back in history. I think some of the buildings in that area, Urban Renewal should probably went a little further when they were there, but, so I really have a problem with it. I don't want to cut us off from upgrading our downtown at all, and that's what I'm fearful about. I will go with voting this proposal down, but I do hope that we do have a plan of going back and see if we can make it feasible that we can have some growth in Summersworth without going through all the houses that we go through or whatever, because it's just making it so hard for developed, the community to try to develop, and that isn't what it should be about. There should be guidelines of exactly what should be needed, and it should be spelled a lot clearer. Thank you.
Question for the council is on not adopting Ordinance Number Four-twenty-four. Further discussion. Counselor Mishu, and then Vincent. Counselor Mishu.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have to talk about this. This past weekend, I ran into a couple residents, and they actually mentioned that I was backing down to the HDC. I just want everybody to know, and council, that I'm very much in forward interested in downsizing, but it's not time to do it now. We have to do it right. I'm willing to listen to the HDC and explain to me why these certain areas that we want to downsize, why they should still be there, and maybe, I know, we can compromise some of it, I'll probably agree, should stay, and some might not. But I want to make sure that we have this open communication between the both city council and HDC, and come up with a right solution to get this done right, because I, as one member of the HDC mentioned at that meeting, don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. So, I'll be in favor of voting this down, but I'll be holding on to this. If nothing comes out that I like, I'll bring this back up. Might have to change the number on it, but I will bring it up if I have to. Really, we can get together and hopefully come up with a good solution and make this work for everybody. Thank you.
Question for the council is on not adopting Ordinance Number Four-twenty-four. Further discussion. Counselor Vincent, and then Gibson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, like they say at the State House, this is not ready for prime time. And, you know, it's so much more than the district, too. You know the headaches that contractors have? Going for a permit to put an asphalt roof back on an asphalt, another asphalt roof on, but they gotta go in front of the HDC to do it. And I'm not against it. What I'm trying to say is maybe we can move it along a little bit by having a code enforcement officer go over and go, yep, it's an asphalt roof. Let's put the, you can put the same thing back on, even windows. So, yeah, I'm definitely against this, and we definitely need to look at the whole picture. Thank you, Your Honor.
Question for the council is not adopting Ordinance Number Four-twenty-four. Further discussion. Counselor Gibson.
I lived in the HDC for probably ten years, okay? I had to deal with the ordinances that were in place for it at that time, and I'll tell you, I was one of the people that wanted to shoot somebody before we were done, because I was rebuilding after a fire. But, one of the things I want people to keep in mind, and no offense to anybody when I say this, but using developers as a rationale for changing the HDC is not something that I would ever fall back on, because the favorite child of this whole discussion, eighty-five Elm Street, I'm not very impressed with. I won't go into what my true feelings are, because I might get censored by the mayor. I don't want him to have to do that his last day.
Last meeting, not my last day.
Well... Last meeting, I'm sorry.
You don't get rid of me till January.
Development is important, but when you're dealing with infill situations, you have to take everything into consideration, and I don't want to lose the character of the community in order to advance development. And one of the things that I have a problem with is when people start throwing out costs all the time as a rationale for this. I've talked to a couple of people about it, and the surprising thing is, if eighty-five Elm had done a little more homework before they came before any of the boards, there are very simple, very inexpensive ways to present the character of older mill buildings. Doesn't have to be brick. There are other ways to do it, and they've made this into a major kerfuffle, and I don't want that to be what people are going to use to try to destroy something that I feel is truly important to the heritage of this community.
Question for the council is on not adopting Ordinance Number Four-twenty-four. Further discussion. Counselor Austin.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to clarify a little bit. In my report from the EDC, I mentioned about the benefit to developers, about that grant that's available if they redevelop historic properties. And that was only one of the items that were discussed during that workshop, and never once did anybody talk about the cost of renovations. That was not a topic of discussion there. Much of this discussion focused around the HDC's work in working with people who want to make those renovations. They convinced me that they are more flexible now than probably they ever have been in terms of making suggestions for changes or approving what's coming in front of them. So, I think that, you know, let's be careful when we talk about the underlying current that's been existing for a long time. I agree with Counselor Widdam that it's still there, but I think at some point, we have to understand what the facts are and not let the old story get in the way of trying to improve what we have, because I think that certainly maintaining the Historic District Commission in some form is a benefit to Summersworth, and we need to do that. Whether this ordinance was the right thing to do, I don't know. It may very well come back and be exactly the same the next time it's considered it. But I did want to thank Counsel Widdam for making the proposal, because we never would have had this discussion without it, and the undercurrent would have still been there, and nobody's opinions would change, and we wouldn't be going into next year thinking about, you know, working together to try to come up with a better way to do this business. So, that's that. Thank you.
Question for the council is on not adopting Ordinance Number Four-twenty-four. Further discussion. None being so. If you are in favor of not adopting Ordinance Number Four-twenty-four, you will state by saying yes. If you are opposed to not adopting Ordinance Number Four-twenty-four, you will state by saying no. Is the parliamentary situation clear?
Mm-hmm.
Parliamentary situation being clear. Chair now recognizes the clerk to call the roll.
Excuse me. I don't know if that's clear. Aren't we voting on the ordinance as it was originally written?
You are voting on the ordinance before you, as amended.
So, it's been amended.
It has not been, it is the ordinance before you that is not amended. No amendment has been brought forward, so if you were in favor of, the motion was to not adopt the ordinance. So, if you were in favor of not adopting the ordinance, then you will vote yes. A yes vote will in turn kill the ordinance.
Right. That's what I want.
You are in favor of, then, not approving the motion to not adopt the ordinance, you will vote no. Is that parliamentary situation clear?
Crystal.
So, if you vote yes, you are in turn killing the ordinance. So, in this case, a yes vote is a no against the ordinance, and a no is actually a yes with the ordinance.
Sorry, guys.
One other comment. It's as confusing as the HDC, so, if I had my way, I'd have called it all.
Again, so to make the parliamentary situation clear, if you are not in favor of adopting, the motion is to not adopt Ordinance Number Four-twenty-four, you will state by saying yes. If you are, in fact, in favor of adopting Ordinance Number Four-twenty-four, then you will vote no, so that a substitute motion can then be made afterwards. Is the parliamentary situation clear? A paper yes will not hold in this council. Counselor, when you are called, you need to physically say something. Clerk will now call the roll.
Counselor Pepin.
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Mishu?
Yes.
Widdam?
With a bit of hesitation, yes.
Girding?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Messier?
No.
Ordinance Number Four-twenty-four is not adopted. Chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on Ordinance Number Five-twenty-four.
Ordinance Number Five-twenty-four, to amend Chapter Four, Personnel Rules and Regulations, Section Six-point-four, Transfer Between Departments, and Section Seven-point-two, Overtime.
Ordinance Number Five-twenty-four, having been ready first and second time, is open to further amendment. No amendment being... No amendment be offered, the chair will obtain a motion on ordinance number 524. Counselor Pepin. Counselor Pepin moves that ordinance number 524 be so far as adopted, seconded by Counselor Cameron. Discussion. None being so, if you are in favor of the adoption of ordinance number 524, you will state by saying yes. If you are opposed, you will state by saying no. Chair recognizes the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Pepin.
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Misho?
Yes.
Witham?
Yes.
Girding?
Just skip.
Cameron?
Yes.
Messier?
Ordinance number 524 is adopted. Chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on Resolution 2224.
Resolution number 2224, to authorize the city manager to contract with Richardson Electric Company, Inc. of Seabrook, New Hampshire, for the replacement of two variable frequency drives at the water treatment facility.
Resolution 2224, having been ready first and second time, is open to further amendment. No amendment be offered, the chair will obtain a motion on Resolution 2224. Counselor Witham.
Move for its adoption.
Counselor Witham moves the adoption of Resolution 2224, seconded by Counselor Gibson. Discussion. None being so, if you are in favor of the adoption of Resolution 2224, you will state by saying yes. If you are opposed, you will state by saying no. Chair recognizes the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Pepin.
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Misho?
Yes.
Witham?
Yes.
Girding?
He... Just skip him.
Cameron?
Yes.
And Messier?
Resolution 2224 is adopted. Chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on Resolution 2424.
Resolution number 2424, to authorize the city manager to enter into a purchase and sales agreement with Kenneth Scarpetti and Douglas Anderson of Hooks at New Hampshire to sell the former National Guard Readiness Center located at 15 Blackwater Road for residential development.
Resolution 2424, having been ready first and second time, is open to further amendment. No amendment be offered, the chair will obtain a motion on Resolution 2424. Counselor Witham.
Move for its adoption.
Counselor Witham moves the adoption of Resolution 2424, seconded by Counselor Messier. Discussion. Counselor Witham.
Thanks. Fully in support of this resolution. I think the plan that has been shared with us, that is envisioned for the property, fits the neighborhood, right? We know that the National Guard Readiness Center sits amongst a recreation property, but more largely around residential properties. So, this fits that area. You know, the council considered a number of options to include commercial options there, keeping it for a city facility, on and on and on. But of all of them, this one fits there the best, right? And I have to remind counsel that although I think the process to get us here was important, we started this process with the National Guard Redevelopment Committee that kind of honed in on something not too dissimilar from this. So, it's fascinating the journey we take, but sometimes the journey is important to the end result. So, important to the end result. So, I plan to support this resolution and move forward with this property. Thank you.
Question for the council is on the adoption of Resolution 2424. Further discussion, Counselor Vincent.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, I envisioned a pool there and an ice skating rink, and I know some of you are probably chuckling, but maybe down the road, you'll think different. Now, I'm gonna support this, because I believe the people who are purchasing are wholeheartedly honest, and I do believe that they'll improve the area and our community. I really, I can, I have a sense of people, and when you got up, Ken, is I think your first name, you're wholeheartedly honest, I believe. So, I am gonna support it. For all you that are still chuckling about the pool and the enclosed ice rink, keep chuckling, because you never know. Thank you.
Question for the council is on the adoption of Resolution 2424. Further discussion. None being so, if you are in favor of the adoption of Resolution 2424, you will state by saying yes. If you are opposed, you will state by saying no. Chair recognizes the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Pepin.
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Misho?
Yes.
Witham?
Yes.
Girding?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Messier?
Yes.
Resolution 2424 is adopted. Brings us to Agenda Item Number 16, which is new business. Chair recognizes the clerk for a first reading on ordinance number 624.
Your Honor, could we read that by title only?
Counsel Witham moves that city council rules be so far suspended as to allow a first reading on ordinance number 424 by title only, seconded by Counselor Pepin. Question for the council is on suspension of council rules. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nope, the ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, and city council rules are so far suspended. Chair recognizes the clerk for a first reading on ordinance number 624 by title only.
Ordinance number 624, city council meeting scheduled for 2024.
Ordinance number 624, Counsel Witham.
Like to move to suspend council rules for a second reading this evening.
Counsel Witham moves that city council rules be so far suspended as to allow a second reading on ordinance number 624 this evening, seconded by Counselor Messier. Question for the council is on suspension of council rules. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nope, the ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, and city council rules are so far suspended. Chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on ordinance number 624.
Ordinance number 624, city council meeting scheduled for 2024.
Ordinance number 624, having been ready first and second time, is open to further amendment. No amendment be offered, the chair will obtain a motion on ordinance number 624. Counselor Gibson.
I move that we accept ordinance 624.
Counselor Gibson moves that ordinance number 624 be so far as adopted, seconded by Counselor Cameron. Discussion. None being so, if you are in favor of the adoption of ordinance number 624, you will state by saying yes. If you are opposed, you will state by saying no. Chair recognizes the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Pepin.
Yes.
Vincent?
Yep, yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Misho?
Yes.
Witham?
Yes.
Girding?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Messier?
Yes.
Resolution 2424 is adopted. Brings us to item number 16, which is new business. Chair recognizes the clerk for a first reading on ordinance number 624.
Your Honor, could we read that by title only?
Counsel Witham moves that city council rules be so far suspended as to allow a second reading on ordinance number 424 by title only, seconded by Counselor Pepin. Question for the council is on suspension of council rules. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nope, the ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, and city council rules are so far suspended. Chair recognizes the clerk for a first reading on ordinance number 624 by title only.
Ordinance number 624, city council meeting scheduled for 2024.
Ordinance number 624, having been ready first and second time, is open to further amendment. No amendment be offered, the chair will obtain a motion on ordinance number 624. Needed to get the old Model T cranked again here. Counselor Witham.
I move for its adoption.
Counselor Witham moves that Resolution 2524 be so far as adopted, seconded by Counselor Vincent. Discussion. None being so, if you are in favor of the adoption of Resolution 2524, you will state by saying yes. If you are opposed, you will state by saying no. Chair recognizes the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Pepin.
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Misho?
Yes.
Witham?
Yes.
Girding?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Messier?
Yes.
Resolution 2524 is adopted. Chair recognizes the clerk for a first and second reading on Resolution 2624.
Resolution number 2624, a vote to adopt the Somersworth Community Power Aggregation Plan and to authorize the city manager to submit the plan with the New Hampshire Public Utilities Commission.
Resolution 2624, having been ready first and second time, is open to further amendment. No amendment be offered, the chair will obtain a motion on Resolution 2624. Counselor Witham.
Move for its adoption.
Counselor Witham moves the adoption of Resolution 2624, seconded by Counselor Austin. Discussion. Counselor Witham.
Yeah, I'd just like to give a shout out to Henry Herdenen from the Community Power Coalition. He has been extremely helpful in guiding the committee locally through the process. He knows of which he speaks, very open to answering questions. I think it has helped tremendously to move this ball forward as quickly as we have, so thank you for that.
Question for the council is on the adoption of Resolution 2624. Further discussion. None being so, if you are in favor of the adoption of Resolution 2624, you will state by saying yes. If you are opposed, you will state by saying no. Chair recognizes the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Pepin.
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Misho?
Yes.
Witham?
Yes.
Girding?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Messier?
Yes.
Resolution 2524 is adopted. Chair recognizes the clerk for a first and second reading on Resolution 2624.
Resolution number 2624, a vote to adopt the Somersworth Community Power Aggregation Plan and to authorize the city manager to submit the plan with the New Hampshire Public Utilities Commission.
Resolution 2624, having been ready first and second time, is open to further amendment. No amendment be offered, the chair will obtain a motion on Resolution 2624. Counselor Witham.
Move for its adoption.
Counselor Witham moves the adoption of Resolution 2624, seconded by Counselor Austin. Discussion. Counselor Witham.
Yeah, I'd just like to give a shout out to Henry Herdenen from the Community Power Coalition. He has been extremely helpful in guiding the committee locally through the process. He knows of which he speaks, very open to answering questions. I think it has helped tremendously to move this ball forward as quickly as we have, so thank you for that.
Question for the council is on the adoption of Resolution 2624. Further discussion. None being so, if you are in favor of the adoption of Resolution 2624, you will state by saying yes. If you are opposed, you will state by saying no. Chair recognizes the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Pepin.
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Misho?
Yes.
Witham?
Yes.
Girding?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Messier?
Yes.
Resolution 2624 is adopted. Chair recognizes the clerk for a first and second reading on Resolution 2724.
Resolution number 2724, to accept the newly constructed sidewalk on Tri-City Road.
Resolution 2724, having been ready first and second time, is open to further amendment. No amendment be offered, the chair will obtain a motion on Resolution 2724. Counselor Austin.
I'll move the adoption of Resolution 2724.
Counselor Austin moves that Resolution 2724 be so far as adopted, seconded by Counselor Cameron. Discussion. None being so, if you are in favor of the adoption of Resolution 2724, you will state by saying yes. If you are opposed, you will state by saying no. Chair recognizes the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Pepin.
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Misho?
Yes.
Witham?
Yes.
Girding?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Messier?
Resolution 2724 is adopted. Brings us to votes under other, other A, a vote to appoint Finance Director Scott A. Smith as the city representative to the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire and City Manager Robert Bellmore as the city alternate representative to the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. The vote will be to appoint both. Discussion. None being so, all those in favor of the appointments, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nope, the ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, and the appointments are hereby confirmed. Other, under B, to set the polling hours for January 23rd, the January 23rd, 2024 presidential primary. We will take a motion of setting the hours and second, and we will move in this proceeding order. If the first motion that is seconded fails, then we will go back to perceive another motion. So, I will not obtain amendments if someone says seven to seven o'clock. I'm not going to obtain an amendment that someone says, I'd like to amend, to push it to six thirty. It is that we will go through each motion if there is more than one motion. Counselor Witham.
I've never been on the prevailing side of the first motion, so I'm gonna try to recommend that we go from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Counsel Witham moves that the polling hours for the January 23rd presidential primary be set from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., seconded by Counselor Austin. Discussion. None being so, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nope, the ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it.
Hallelujah.
The polling hours for the presidential primary is set from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Just to note, counsel, generally under the history during presidential primary or presidential election years, the polling hours have generally been seven to seven. So, you have followed precedent on that. Moves us to Agenda Item Number 17, which is closing comments by, which is comments by visitors. Any closing comments by visitors? Please come forward, state your name, your address, and the ward you live in if you have that applicable information. Any closing comments by visitors? None being so, brings us to Agenda Item Number 18, which is closing comments by council members, and we will start with Ward Four Counselor, Counselor Austin.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mayor Hilliard, honorable members of the city council, residents of the city of Somersworth. Thank you. To my fellow citizens, I'm honored and grateful to have served your city as your elected representative, first on the Somersworth School Board and most recently on the Somersworth City Council for a total of fourteen years. Your confidence in my experience and leadership over that time is something I will cherish and carry with me for a long time. To the mayor and my fellow counselors, it's been a real privilege to serve with such an outstanding group of community leaders, to accomplish many significant projects, and to assist in making decisions that support our vision for the community in so many ways. I truly believe that together, we've made a difference. Thank you to the city manager and his staff of expert, dedicated people who provide much of the insight and information we need to make our decisions possible. Our city staff is second to none, and your work is sincerely appreciated. I grew up in a family that valued public service. My mother was a teacher's aide for many years, and my father served on the board of Selectmen in Barak for a long time. Being a member of the local Boy Scout troop there, as well as belonging to a number of other civic organizations as I grew up, I developed a deep understanding of what civic duty was, and it continues to be a very important part of the person I am today. Living in Somersworth for the last thirty-two years, I've participated in many organizations that have contributed directly to the city of Somersworth in one way or another. Whether it was my leadership roles in the PTA for twenty years, president of our parish council, chair of the local school board, or currently as a city counselor, I've always been guided by my personal belief in the importance of integrity. Regardless of the role that I've been in, I spent the time necessary to study all sides the best interests of the city of Somersworth. One of the many accomplishments I am most proud of is the way our city governance, the city council and the school board, works as a team. When I was first elected to the school board, there was a culture of distrust between the two elected bodies, and accomplishments were difficult to come by. In my role as school board chair, I had the opportunity to work closely with Mayor Hilliard as he began to break down the barriers that existed, building relationships based on trust and understanding, always with the goal of moving the two groups to work more collaboratively together. As a result, a joint resolution was passed by both bodies to create the Joint Commission of the City Council and School Board, permanently keeping this collaboration in place. At the Joint Commission, discussions occur among representatives of both bodies to increase the knowledge and understanding of issues, as well as to allow the Joint Commission to recommend actions to each body with a common understanding of those recommendations. In particular, passing the annual operating budget moved to a shared discussion item inasmuch as we came to understand that the city as a whole has one bucket of money, and that needs to be allocated for the benefit of all. In my experience, this collaborative model is unique to Somersworth, and I am proud to have played a significant role in making that happen. My work on the city council has been no less fulfilling. We've made dramatic improvements to the way we manage our resources related to infrastructure, provided significant funding to address longstanding capital improvements at our schools, established budgets to meet the needs of the city even in some very difficult years, and created relationships with our neighboring communities in Stratford County to address issues that are larger than Somersworth itself. None of this could have occurred without both the spirit and intentional practice of collaboration, cooperation, and transparency. I am proud to have been an active participant in many of these discussions and decisions. As I leave this seat for Ward Four to the next city counselor, I would urge all elected officials to operate with the abject transparency and cooperation that has been so successful over the last ten years. We've seen the destruction that can be caused when there are hidden agendas and actions taken that serve only personal interests or the interests of only a small group of people. It is vital for Somersworth to continue to move forward, that we continue to discuss our concerns openly, honestly, and passionately, hearing all sides, and then coming to decisions that are truly in the best interest of all. Anything less moves us backward. What's next for me? I intend to continue to pay attention to the work being done by our elected officials, and will certainly speak out on occasion when it may be beneficial. As with all of us, the future can be uncertain. It will be up to our new mayor and city council to determine over the next two years whether the city will continue to make progress toward its vision, as expressed by the Eyes on Thirty Committee and the master plan. We'll continue to encourage business and residential development in a sustainable and purposeful way, and will foster a governance model that is collaborative and not divisive. I wish you all well as you continue to keep Somersworth on the move. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Counselor Austin. If you can join me down at the podium, please. At the conclusion of the Constitutional Convention on that very, very hot, record-setting, stifling heat, historic heat that summer, Benjamin Franklin had just left what is now deemed as Independence Hall. He was confronted by the biggest philanthropist in Philadelphia, and the famous quote she called out to was, "Mr. Franklin, so what is it? Is it a monarchy or is it a republic?" Mr. Franklin paused and hesitated and answered back to her, saying, "It's a republic if you can keep it." That line has echoed throughout our history and is modeled by gentlemen like Don Austin, who models how we keep the republic. We keep the republic by service through the heart of offering oneself up for the hits and the swipes, of the sacrifice of family, of the sacrifice of your time, of the sacrifice of yourself, for no glory, for no accolades, for simply just service and love. Love to your community, love to your state, love to your country, and as Franklin echoed throughout Philadelphia to that older woman that day, "Love to the republic." Don, thank you for modeling what democracy is all about. It is about service. It is about giving of self. It is not about advancing one name. It is not about hidden agendas. It is not about a seize of power, and it is not about overtaking something, or echoing, "This is about a revolution," or moving forward with your hidden agendas. Don, you have always served openly. You have always served honestly, and you have always served with purely the intention of making everything that you encounter better. Somersworth is better because of you. A generation of students have moved through our school system with a better education because of you, and this council was better because of you, because of you sitting in that Ward Four seat. Thank you, Don. Thank you for the biggest gift that you could give to this community, the gift of yourself, the sacrifice of yourself, and your love of the republic. For your service, we have ordered you a chair with the city seal on it and your name engraved that will be delivered to your house. So, here is a picture of that chair that will be coming. Until that, what we'll do is we'll let you take this chair, and you will have to swap it out with the city manager when it is delivered. So, feel free to take this one home, and when you receive the city chair, just please bring this back. Don, thank you.
You could always give them yours.
True. It can just scratch out my name on it. We will now move in order. Ward One Counselor, Counselor Peppin.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I always hate December after the election. It's the last meeting that you grow with your friendships. Some of these council members that come in, that you don't know them at the beginning of them, but you end up having a bond with them afterwards, even though sometimes we argue against each other or whatever, it's left there. We're always friends at the end, and it's sad to see people go, "Mayor, you don't know how much this is going to change the atmosphere of this council, us losing you. We understand that you decide to go or whatever, and I know our next mayor will do a great job, but it's still a loss, no matter how you put it." Don, I cannot say how much I feel that the loss of the city of not having you sitting there. Even though I'm not taking away from the new member that's going to sit there, she sat on the council before, and she did an excellent job there, too. But when you have somebody with so much talent and so much vigor to give to the city and so much dedication to the city, it's a shame to see it being taken away. That hurts. I was a council representative on the school board. My wife served under you when she was on the school board meeting, and you were chair of the school board. I know how many hours and dedication that you put onto it. At the school boards, put in a lot more dedication, a lot more hours than we do. Those kids are so important, and I look at them and my hat's off to every member of the school board that's there, but as a chair, it's a lot, a lot different. You are deeply going to be missed, not just by me or the rest of the city councilors here, but you're going to be missed by the citizens of Somersworth. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Ward Two Counselor, Counselor Vincent.
Thank you, Your Honor, and I've said a lot about you this evening, so I'm going to switch my attention over to Don, even though you'll truly be missed. I, uh, thank you. I first met Don Austin several years ago when I was coaching his son in football. I was a wild man then. I know it's hard to believe, okay? But serving on the city council with Don, I really didn't know him then. He was a parent. I get it. He supported his kid in football, and his wife came along, and they supported their son. But I got a chance to know you, Don, here, and the city is truly going to miss you because you're a really, really, really good servant for the city, a counselor. And that's where we are. We serve the city, and I don't mean that in any disrespect, but that's what we do. We serve the city, and I know that you bleed school board very heavily. I don't know what that color is, but it's, when it comes out, it says "school" all over it, okay? So, Don, you know, I hope this isn't the end. I really hope that you kind of maybe regroup after this and come back and help us out because we really need your assistance. Thank you, Don, and have a great Christmas in New Year.
Thank you, Counselor. Ward Three Counselor, Counselor Gibson.
I served a long time with Don on the school board, and I had nothing but respect for him there, and in my brief tenure with him here, that respect was only reinforced. There are too few people like himself and Mayor Hilliard that the first priority to them is the community at large rather than what they want. So, Don, I'm going to miss you. I wish you the best, and as previously stated, I hope you sneak back in. But anyways, as the year comes to an end, I want to thank all the people who serve the city in our different departments. They're the best of the best, and I wish them a Merry Christmas and a better New Year. And to all the others here, may the same sentiment be spoken.
Thank you, Counselor. Ward Five Counselor, Counselor Michu.
Thank you, Your Honor. I didn't really get to know Don until he sat next to me. I knew who he was. I know him from church, out and about in the community, but I didn't really get to know him until he actually sat next to me. And jokingly, I always referred to him as my right-hand man, and thinking about it now, how true that really is. You don't know how much support you've actually given me just by sitting there. I'm really going to miss you. I appreciate your friendship, the amount of knowledge that you brought to this seat and shared with me so I can really make a really good informed decision when we're making council votes. It was because of you. I know you won't be sitting next to me, but I will definitely be seeing you out and about. Lord knows what Father Andrew is going to have in store, but I know I'll see you at the parish picnic, the parish barbecue, the tailgate party, and whatever else he dreams up. I'm sure he has something planned, but I know I'll see you then. Thank you for everything you've done. I really appreciate it, and I really appreciate your friendship. Thank you. Mayor, I can't say enough for you. I'm definitely going to miss you, too, but I know I'll see you out and about. I'm really anxious to see what's next for you. I hope it's something political, but that's up to you. But I really hope the best for you, too. So, I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Years, have a safe holiday season, and see you next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. For now, it's more time on the spin bike, trust me. Moving to the at-large side. At-large Counselor, Counselor Witham.
And I'll join you, I promise. Don Austin exemplifies what it is to be a city counselor. He does his homework. He is invested in the process. He's in touch with the community. If you were to Google what a city counselor looks like, Don Austin's picture might well emerge, right? You're a calming presence in these chambers. I think you shared in your closing remarks, Counselor, that you like to listen a whole lot more than you like to talk. Clearly, that is not something that I am very good at, and I learn a lot from you. You provide me the pause and the calm, and there are many times in these chambers where I come in sort of convicted on planning to vote one way or the other, and my mind is changed. And more often than not, as I reflect back on those moments, you're part of that, a big part of that, and that's a special skill set to convince somebody to change their mind. But you're able to do that because of your demeanor, your calming presence, your thoughtfulness, and that will certainly be missed in these chambers. So, we'll miss you. Thank you for your service, and as they say, "I'll see you in church." He sits like right behind me, so he keeps tabs on me. An important shout-out, though he's probably not watching tonight, to our former Fire Chief George Kramlinger. I developed a deep appreciation for the chief. He served our community surprisingly. It didn't seem that long, but it was three and a half years that he served here as chief. He's a military veteran, Air Force fighter pilot veteran, a very, very bright guy, and George came on board, and what was our first thing that we gave him? A pandemic. Welcome aboard. Guide us through this. He did. We continued to serve the community in the best way possible, and he found our way through that, serving as our Emergency Management Director and Fire Chief. Along the way, we said, "Hey, that was a challenge enough. Can you build us a new nine million dollar fire station?" And he saw that project through with great detail. He was invested in that project. He changed the culture of the department from a training perspective where it wasn't just something you did, but it was something that was very, very important. As they say, people move needles. He moved the needle. One could debate how much he moved the needle, but he definitely moved the needle in a positive direction for our agency in a short amount of time, and for that, I am very, very thankful. I know our interim Fire Chief, Mark Delner, who's coming in. He'll provide a steady leadership until we can find our next Fire Chief. I'm confident of that. But again, back to Chief Kramlinger, thank you for your service. We appreciate all that you did for our community during some very trying times as the chief during that timeframe. And lastly, it's Christmas time, all right? So, as I was walking through the store the other day, I saw this book, and it talks about "A Christmas Wish." And no, Your Honor, I'm not going to read it. Your Honor is known for reading a book every now and again. I'm not going to do that in the interest of time, but when I saw the title, "Christmas Wish," it made me reflect back upon my childhood, and some of you in the room might remember back in the day, there was a company Sears and Roebuck, and they used to have the wish book that came out at Christmas time. It was about, I don't know how thick it was, a couple, two, three inches thick. And my brother and I would sit in our PJs in the living room, and we would take a marker, and we would circle the toys that we wanted for Christmas, our wish list. Well, obviously, I don't do that anymore, but I do have a wish list for the city of small items, which I will hand-deliver to the city manager tonight, and it's small things, right? Like a new light on the flag at the police department. If you've driven by there, their light that they have now is, I don't even know if it lights much, but it needs to be replaced. The one outside of City Hall for the flag as well. The score booth concession stand at the football field. They replaced the trim three years ago. One would think they could paint it by now. Can we do that? That's a wish, right? Things like that. The CMAC project on High Street, can we really finish it? I mean, can we, right? It's a wish, right? I got some piles of leaves that I cleaned off the ballfield at Noble Pines, like four of them, like four weeks ago. Can we pick them up? Or if someone has a pickup truck I could borrow, I'm glad to do it, right? So, here's my list, and in the spirit of giving, here's one, too. It's a level. So, I was really excited to see the new black historic district street signs go up along High Street, Hamilton, Noble, they'll go all the way down. There ain't a one of them this street. Ain't a one. So, Director Babinski, this is for you. And to all, a good night.
Well done. Well done. At-large Counselor, Counselor Gerting.
Thank God this is the last night that I have to follow you up. Yeah, I also wanted to send my thanks to Counselor Austin. You have been, for the time that you've been on both this council and our school board, a strong advocate for education. I appreciate you not only as a city counselor but as a teacher. You have put in countless hours into this community to improve our schools, help our students, and make sure our teachers have what they need, so thank you so, so much for that. I hope you recognize the impacts that you've had, not only on Somersworth, but I would argue for the whole state of New Hampshire. You've been a fearless advocate for education funding since day one, since even before I was fighting that fight, so I was really thankful to have a partner in that when I, as well, started joining the call to action. But I think like you should be proud of the work that you've done because even just this past year, we received additional funding. We'll see more funding next year for our schools from the state, and we just had a huge lawsuit that may or may not, if it all pans out well, provide even more funding to communities like Somersworth. So, thank you for being there to fight for us. I really super appreciate it. I also appreciate the work you've done on the Economic Development Committee since being the chair. We had our last meeting tonight, and it was just, I was reflecting on all the projects that we've seen move through there that have been shepherded thanks to you. You've put a lot of effort into making sure that this community is growing in the right direction in the right way, and I thank you so much for that work. And again, I know you won't be a stranger to us here at City Hall, and I encourage you not to be. Please continue to do those things, fight those fights, and be around. And if perchance you happen to be so inclined, if you want to move to Ward Five, I hear there's an opening on the school board. I'd love to have you there, but I know that's easier said than done, but really, thank you so, so much. And yeah, that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. At-large Counselor, Counselor Cameron.
Thank you, Your Honor. Don, thank you for everything that you have done. I know, I echo what everybody else has already said, but all the remarks are true. You are very soulful to the community, and everything that you've given of your time and all the chats that we've had over the years, thank you just isn't enough, but that's all I have, is thank you. And don't be a stranger. I know you won't be. I'll see you at Walmart, I'm sure. I won't see you at church because I go to a different one, but I'll probably see you at Walmart. And to everybody that attended the parade, I've had nothing but accolades about it. It was a well-done parade, I've heard, and so thank you to everybody for that. I think it was one of the best ones that we've had, and I had the opportunity to do Shop with a Cop, and that is one of the most funnest events that I do, and everybody had a great time, so thank you, Chief, for all that you do with that. It is just a remarkable event. And Mayor Hilliard, I know I'll be seeing you. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Counselor. At-large Counselor, Counselor Messier.
Thank you. Mr. Austin, thank you. No sense in repeating everything that's been said. Good luck in life and enjoy. Good luck in life and enjoy, and good luck. Couple of other minor things. Speaking of the T-MAC grant or whatever, but the signalization lights on, I think there's some hope because two mornings in a row, I was, I was able to drive through the signalization without having to stop and see nobody to the left or right of me. So there is hope. It's getting there. It's been, what, 12 years? And let's never apply or want a T-MAC grant. There's no way, as long as I'm here, not voting for it. It takes 12 years to get something done. So that's enough of that. And on a more powerful note is the Shop of the Cop. I went by that night unbeknownst to me. I'm like, why are there so many vehicles at the police station? Must be, you know? And then you get on social media, Facebook, and it was Shop of the Cop. But what I was more impressed with, of course, that, is there were numerous other departments from the area. Durham, I mean, I don't want to minimize anybody but state police, county, and it seems that the increased participation year to year just excels. So I want to thank the Somersworth Police Department and all of the police departments on that for Shop of the Cop, because that does lay some foundations for some kids that, in their socioeconomic condition, that they may be around an environment where they don't get along. Some people don't get along with police. So, and you get them young, you teach them, educate them, things does well. Finally, Merry Christmas, and of course, have the happiest of New Years coming up. I will, so enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Before I weed the gavel for the final time and conclude this meeting, some parting thoughts. One, 11 months from now, the American public will go, for those of us who live in the realm of politics with either service or studying or analyzing, believe that this will be the most important presidential election in American history. And that on the ballot will either be, again, us preserving the republic or that the stones of the United States will simply go past and be read by some ancient culture like those of pharaoh's tombs, regardless of the warnings that are being shot across the bow by everyone again who serves or studies. It is with pride that Somersworth has truly modeled what democracy is all about, and each and every one of you are part of that. You are part of that by the hard conversations that you have in the heated moments, and you are part of that by modeling it of how you leave with your arms around each other and patting each other on the back and being able to maintain friendships. That is what service is about, is about serving, is about dinging in at times when it is, becoming heated at times, and then moving on to the next agenda item and not holding that against that person. I am proud of what we have accomplished as a team over the last 10 years and truly believe in my heart that this community models what democracy is all about. Continue that. That is a big task that each and every one of you have as counselors, and an even bigger task that our incoming mayor will have. On that note, that Mary Lect Gerdin mentioned, it should not go past that this community, the smallest community in New Hampshire, went from electing the first gay mayor to electing the second. And with the second, it is always more important than the first. The first kicks open the door for equality. The second proves that a community is truly about equality. And the second moves that model to the hopes of us that live in that community that it simply becomes not a big deal, that you are able to live and not be judged, and instead be judged, as Martin Luther King said, by the content of your character instead of who you are. So let us not simply bypass what a major event that was, that number one went to number two, and that number two proved what has been said for the past 10 years and has proved what all of us have in this heart in our community, of why our ancestors immigrated here from shores because they wouldn't be judged, of why the multiple languages were spoken in this community and continue to be spoken, why the mills were built by the Irish and the Greeks and the French Canadians, why all of us bear different names, why all of us might worship different gods, and why all of us come together to truly prove what that flag in this country is all about. Diversity coming together, forming together one nation, forming together one community, forming it under hope and dreams. The strength lie in all of you. It has been an honor to serve all of you. It has been an honor to serve this community. Counselor Witham moves at the City Council Stand Adjourned, seconded by Counselor Mischu. The question for the council is on adjournment. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The City Council is adjourned.